Good evening and welcome to the June thirteenth meeting of the Yukon Planning Commission. We will begin tonight in invocation by Commissioner Geis and flag salute by Commissioner Gerba. Please, Ron.
Father, we thank you. Thank you for your mercy and your grace in our lives. We pray now for safety for our first responders and the fire police. We thank you for the safety for our children in schools and teachers. I also ask for wisdom from our leaders who give you the glory and praise for everything in your precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Chairman Baker?
Here.
Vice Chairman Wright?
Here.
Commissioner Anmark?
Here.
Commissioner Gerba?
Here.
Commissioner Geis?
Here.
Also tonight, we have City Attorney Roger Reinhardt, City Planner Kelly Driscoll, Mitchell Horke from City Manager's Office, and Kathy Johnson from Development Services. Hopefully, you've all had time to read over the April eleventh minutes. If you have, I have a...
A motion to approve.
Second?
I have a motion to second. Roll call?
Chairman Baker?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Anmark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerba?
Yes.
Commissioner Geis?
Yes.
Do we have anyone in the audience tonight that wants to speak to an item that is not on the agenda? Something not on the agenda. All right. Item three was to hear a request by Mike and Judy Pendleton for a curb cut located east of Sarah Road at the south side of Wilshire. This item will be postponed due to an error in the property description of the public posting. We will not be hearing item three tonight. Item four, to hear a request by John Nail for End Development for a reverse lot split to build a new residential home with a garage and pool. Lot nineteen to twenty of Stone Mill Phase Four. Can you please say your name and...
Yes, Kristen Richards on behalf of John Nail. I'm sorry.
Address of the firm?
Of the firm. Six zero four Beckman Court, Yukon, Oklahoma, seven three zero nine nine.
And your item?
Okay, again, I'm here on behalf of John Nail and For End Development requesting a reverse lot split as listed on item four of the agenda.
And I'll just go down a few things. This is to build a new home, correct?
Yes, sir, to build a new home.
All right, in Stone Mill.
Yes.
Any questions from the commissioners? Any extra items from staff? No? Can I have a draft motion, please?
Motion to approve? Excuse me, sorry. In the case of the reverse lot split or lot combination application by For End Development, we have read the staff report, received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings cited in the staff report. I move that this item be recommended for approval.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Roll call?
Chairman Baker?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Anmark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerba?
Yes.
Commissioner Geis?
Yes.
Good luck with the project.
Thank you so much.
The next item is request for lot split of lots one through five in block four of the original platte of Yukon. That's a better note is Knight than Cali. Is there someone here to speak to the item?
I have a question. Is that the one that has to do the Rock Port, the Rock Property Group?
Oh, Rack.
Rack Property Group?
Okay, I'm sorry, I misread that.
It does?
It does. I have a question. I live there. I live across the street from there.
Yeah, well, you're gonna have to come to the podium.
No worries. I'm sorry. I haven't done this before.
And I need your name?
My name is Karen Snyder. My address is one one zero North Ninth Street.
Okay.
I live across the street from here. And I had a question about what it is exactly that they're trying to rezone for?
Okay, and usually what we'll do is we'll have the presenter present the whole project.
Okay.
Let you hear it, and then you can come back up
Okay.
and ask questions.
Okay, great.
With all the information that they...
Okay, great. Thank you.
Say your name and who you represent, and address, please.
My name is Ryan Bloom. I am here representing Rack Property Group. My address is eleven forty-one Canterbury Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma. On line item five, we are looking to consolidate the original twenty-five foot wide lots into two separate lots so that we can build two duplexes there. Those duplexes would face Ninth Street. There is a rendering of these duplexes that is in the photo. They're all brick, architectural shingles, very high-quality residences. My partner in this endeavor is a custom home builder. He's actually building a house right now on Cedar that's very nice, very, very high-end finishes for a rental. And so, we would be looking to build basically the same thing in two duplexes. We just need to basically reverse lot split and then re-split into two square lots instead of the skinny lots that were originally platted over a hundred years ago.
So you're talking about the house he's building, just the one right on the... Right behind the eye care center over here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, just as an example of the quality of work that we'll be bringing to the neighborhood.
Okay, are you asking for any variances from Yukon building codes or anything?
No, we're...
As far as the structures?
We'll be in compliance with all of the setbacks and all of the structures of the building code and the, all the planning, planning department requirements as far as setbacks and everything is concerned.
Okay.
I have a question for staff. There's a line in, in here that says, "Staff would suggest the developer use the existing platted alley to reduce driveways along Ninth Street." What's the goal here with that? Because it seems like, what I've read, is that the Rack Group wants to put double driveways on Ninth Street. Am I correct in my assumptions?
The goal would be, this is, you know, kind of the core of Yukon, and to reduce the amount of curb cuts. As it is now, you're talking about basically four driveways along Ninth Street there. So that's, that's the reason for the recommendation to utilize the alley, if possible.
So it would be a minimum of four driveways? It would be a minimum of four driveways and use the alley for what?
For one of the duplexes.
Okay.
I don't think we have a problem with that. There are no curbs in that area. But it, just to clarify, it would be two wide driveways. It wouldn't be four driveways. It would be a shared kind of four-car wide driveway going to each two-car garage home.
Right. Yeah, it's still, it's a very large area to interrupt the pedestrian environment. That's, that's why the recommendation.
So you, the recommendation would be to turn one duplex and have the driveway go into the alley?
Correct, or if there's some other layout that would work.
Gotcha. I don't... Okay. My expert on building is telling me that that won't work.
Okay.
Where does that leave us, then?
I think what we're getting confused here a little bit in our new zoning ordinance we're working on, that's what Kelly is talking about, is that we're talking about trying to do side access or rear access to some of this area. Because this is the area that we're talking about redeveloping in the future. And the way that they've got these laid out, they've got two duplexes, that it's gonna have one large driveway that's gonna access the street there. And the way that they've got them designed currently, that would not work.
But we get to, I mean, there would still be final platte approvals ahead?
No, these are already platted lots. They're just wanting to turn the houses. Because they could actually build them to access Cali. But the problem is, there's a big drop-off there. So what they're wanting to do is turn the houses where they face the opposite street.
Yeah, that... I think those originally faced north toward the track.
That's correct.
There's a, you've been over there.
Yeah, it's a big drop-off.
It just falls off.
Right.
And so, we're gonna have, I don't really see why we should have them come in anywhere but from the west.
For this, it's okay. We're getting ready to cross over to something a little bit different. That's something we need to talk about. Because we're talking about redeveloping, you know, rear access, side accesses, you know, use the alley for access, so...
So we can talk about that after the lot split?
We can talk about that later on.
Okay.
Are sidewalks included in this?
Normally, in the older part of town, we have not been putting sidewalks. We started that. What happens is, we come up with these small pieces of sidewalk all over town, and they're not connecting. What we do is have them sign an agreement that at a future date, they'll put the sidewalk in. But the problem is, you know, when we're talking five, ten, twelve years out, it doesn't really work. So eventually, we'll be talking about sidewalks and how we redevelop the area. That's part of the zoning code updates or changes, so...
That one might be difficult by the way that, that lot goes.
Yeah, and like I said, we were doing that all over town. You'll see spots. But what happens is, we're not connecting. And then when it does connect, it's too old, too late, has issues.
Aren't there a couple of like drive, deteriorated dri... Isn't there at least one deteriorated driveway there now?
There is.
Yes.
Mitchell, I've got a question, too, just concerning, you know, I understand the, how we're going with more of a comprehensive plan all over Yukon. But in this case, I was just wondering what type of pedestrian traffic we've got or anticipate along going north on Ninth Street?
Doesn't go anywhere.
And that's one of the reasons why I would think that this may not be as, you know, a showstopper. It may not be as big of a deal if you don't have a, you know, it's not a thoroughfare for pedestrians generally.
Yeah.
No through, no through-street there.
Mm-hmm. Well, like I said, right now, we're just having them sign a letter that a future date that we'll do that.
Okay.
So staying with the lot split. Do we have any questions on the lot split itself? Anything, commissioners? Can I have someone, have someone read a motion on the lot split only, please?
I can do it. In the case of the lot split application by Rack Property Group LLC, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings cited in the staff report.
My second.
Have a motion and a second? Roll call?
Do we want, did she want to speak on it?
Yeah.
Oh, did you want to speak on the lot split or...
Well, I wanted, I wanted to kind of talk about all of it. I don't even know how to even go about it.
Okay, this is, this is about dividing the five lots into...
Right, I understand. But once we get that...
Come on, I'll follow you.
Once we get that started, then, you know, we're gonna be building duplexes across the street from my home. And these, and I live in a single-family area, and I have a real concern about this. You know, if we divide the lots, and single-family homes are gonna go on there, and they're not gonna be potential rental properties. I know anything can be a rental property, but I have a real concern about duplexes.
Okay. What is, what is the...
And I don't know how to address it, and I don't know if I'm doing this properly, but...
You can't do anything wrong.
Okay.
If you're a citizen of the county, we assume you're correct. Can you talk about the current zoning, Mitchell, what it's currently zoned for?
Okay, it's currently zoned R-two residential, which actually means they can build a single-family or a duplex. Currently, they can do that. Like I said, it'd be facing to the north. Like I said, we're having them rotate it where it makes more sense. So the zoning already allows them to do what they're requesting. Other than, we're splitting the lots where they can face to the west.
So they could, they could build duplexes without really anything from the city because it's already zoned?
Just the permits.
Okay. And so, we're taking, we're taking five lots. In the old platte, it was five unusable...
There's five lots there, about twenty-five by one forty, I think. They run north and south, so they're taking five of those and putting them together. And then there's some lots behind that that are different.
What was the original thinking on that? Was that to run duplexes, shotgun-style?
On the twenty-five-foot lots? Well, remember, this, this, this was the, you know...
Just the, it's old zoning.
Yeah, this platte was actually hand-drawn, so it's
Wow.
way, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
We're talking about eighteen hundreds. So it's original town of Yukon.
But the, but the bottom line is, it's, it's zoned R-two and it will remain R-two.
That, the, all but one lot.
Well...
That's the far, for this one, all of them stay in R-two.
One through five, okay.
Yeah.
Ma'am, if you want to approach, I've got some documents that may help you kind of understand what they're looking at doing. I don't think you got this, but we've got, I've got a spare set of this, so...
Okay.
You can have these. So this is...
Yeah, I saw some of the pictures that he had.
And then if you want to look at this, this is basically the lot.
Across from my house.
The only...
They're by myself, and it worries me.
Okay.
Because that's not what I bought. And I know that they'll look nice, and I know all those things, but I bought to be in Old Town, so that's a concern.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion and I have a second. Is that correct? Any other comments?
Sorry.
Any other comments, new questions? Roll call?
Chairman Baker?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Anmark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerba?
Yes.
Commissioner Geis?
Yes.
We'll move to the next item.
The next item on the list, so there's ten lots originally, and six of the lots are zoned residential. Four of the lots are zoned for light commercial. And we are wanting to take one of those twenty-five-foot-wide lots, Lot Six, from the residential zoning and convert it into commercial zoning so that we will have basically two properties of equal size. The residential will be five lots wide, and the commercial would be five lots wide. We don't have to have that extra lot to build the building, but it will make the logistics and the parking and everything work out better. It's not gonna be any more dense because of the lot change. It's just allowing a little bit bigger parking area by twenty-five feet, which will just allow better ingress and egress from the property. The driveway for the commercial development will go north onto Cali Street. It's not quite as steep on that end, and so we'll build a nice driveway down there that's compliant and nice and big enough to be able to get traffic in and out of there. It is a commercial building, but these are intended to be for just small, light, commercial customers. We don't, they, they won't be big enough for a semi-truck to back into or out of. It's not for a warehouse. It's for small commercial operations that just need a garage bay and a small office.
Let us catch up here for a minute.
Yeah, it's already zoned commercial, and there's already a commercial building next door to it.
Right.
I can assure you that the construction and appearance of our building will exceed that of the property to the east of it.
So do you, is it your guess that your driveway would be more on the Lot Nine and Ten end of this?
Yes, it would. And then the, excuse me, the driveway would be more around Lots five, six, seven-ish. And then the buildings themselves will be on Lots Eight, Nine, and Ten.
Okay. Because by the time you get to Ten, there's almost no grid at all.
Right.
On that, okay.
What's to the east over Eighth Street? That's what I can't picture. Is it a commercial district? Undeveloped?
Are you talking about east on this block or east...
East off of Cali and Eighth. So even though the driveway's going north on Cali, what is to the east over...
There is actually a storage unit or storage building, commercial building, that has some issues. It hasn't been well-kept, but it is there. Yeah. Yeah. And actually, Seventh through Ten is already C-three since Six was being included in this piece. To make it better for us and easier for us is why we asked them to go ahead and zone that. For any use or touch of that, it needs to be C-three or the same zoning as the rest of property. So that's why they brought this twenty-five-foot Lot Six to us, so...
So there's no, there's no future plan to later change it to I?
No, it'd have to come back here if there's a change, or it'd have to meet our zoning changes or ordinance that we're bringing forward.
Right, because I...
It wouldn't be appropriate for I anyway.
Yeah, it would be, it really would not be a good thing to come back later and ask for industrial zoning. Just, just so you know upfront.
Yeah. Yeah. All, all uses have to meet the C-three zoning today.
I think it's valuable to have the entrance off of Cali. Do we have them on the hook for that? I mean, is that, do we, do we, do we, will they come back and do another platte approval?
No. If you prove it tonight, they can go ahead and do what they need to do on that.
Okay.
But there's no way to access the property if it's not from Cali, so, I mean, we're a lot stranded if you don't access it.
From Cali.
From Cali.
Okay. And how many, how many businesses are you planning on putting on that, that lot?
Issues on the other side.
Let me look so I don't lie to you. We are planning to put five of them. And again, these are just a sixty-foot-deep, twenty-five-foot-wide. It's basically just a bay with a roll-up door that you could pull a van into and a small office with a bathroom.
So the bay would face west?
Yeah, the bay, the bay doors would face west.
The back of the duplexes, essentially?
Yes.
And not toward the street, right. Are those, are those gonna be connected? Will there be space between there, or I've seen them as almost connected?
It'll be one continuous building, but there will be a sheet rock barrier wall between each of the different units. And again, they're not really storage units. It's intended for like a, you know, just like a small business, small commercial business to have a bay to be able to operate out of.
I can picture a small-time electrician that's got a couple trucks that's coming in and out of it.
Yes, something like that.
It's for the people that should be in those instead of operating their business out of a storage unit.
Exactly. Or parking their service truck in the street of their residential home.
Exactly. I understand. On the... One question, if I go back to it. Do you have a size for not the duplex building, but each duplex unit?
Each duplex unit is twelve hundred and forty square feet. That does not include that each of them will have a two-car garage.
Right, just living space.
Just twelve hundred and forty-one feet of living space. And then each commercial building is fifteen hundred square feet each.
So that's, that's running about fourteen hundred a month right now?
Yeah, something like that.
At market rate, you're not talking Section Eight, you're not talking...
No, these are gonna be, these aren't any kind of Section Eight housing. Again, my, my partner has a great track record here in Yukon. He's developed quite a few very nice rental properties on Desert Spring over in the, I forget the name, River Mesa addition. And so, these are very, very nice rental properties. I think they're gonna command a quality renter that's gonna take care of them. And, and again, they're gonna be nice, you know, brand-new development. I don't think, I think they're, I think they'll make better neighbors than they probably sound like they're going to.
Any more questions? In the audience, staff?
He'd like to speak.
I'd like to speak.
Please say your name and your address, please.
My name is Sean Calhoun, eight twenty-one Cedar Avenue. I own one, two, three, four lots on that block now. My concern is turning into Section Eight. And then right behind me, you illustrated that there was a commercial building that was dilapidated. If you look at our area on this side of Yukon, we are trying to make it nicer. So my biggest concern is, is building duplexes is if you go down Cedar Avenue towards the east, what that's done to the area. Drugs, it's very dilapidated. When you start building that, you create a certain renter. I'm trying to create something better on Cedar Avenue. That's why I've bought and bought, sorry, four houses. I'd like to see that area as old Yukon be fixed up, nice, not turn into rental properties. And I know there's a lot of rental properties on that street. But we all know the city of Yukon is, we're coming up. I mean, and downtown is really coming up. You can see the rental prices over here on Elm Street redoing houses, making it nicer livable. We don't need a lot of rental. My other biggest issue is commercial. You are gonna turn that into commercial. Well, the people that live there, we don't need a tire shop. We don't need someone back there doing ironwork, you know, grinding on the material. It's just not what we need. We need to fix this area up so it's a desirable area. So people want to come live here, not rental property. We have a lot of rental property in Yukon. And an older, to me, kind of historical. I mean, it really is. It's, I mean, my house is a hundred and two years old. House I bought next to me was a hundred and three, a hundred and four. We're doing complete remodels on these houses. And I don't intend for them to be rentals. I want them to be affordable housing. And that's kind of what we're getting towards as rejuvenating Yukon. At least, that's what I want. And I know that my theory is not the best, but these are kind of nice houses. They just needed a little fix-up. But if we come in here and put in quadplexes, and you said they're not Section Eight, right?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. I know what you paid for the land. So you're considering, what are you saying, fourteen hundred a month?
We're still finalizing the economics, but that's a good enough number.
That's, okay. At a hundred and twenty dollars a square foot, build, correct?
We're still furturing it up, but that's a good enough number.
Okay, so you look at your ROI on that. So how long are you all gonna hold on to those properties and then turn them into Section Eight?
We don't, we don't ever plan to turn them into Section Eight. We intend for these to be legacy investments for our families. Again, Zach's a custom home builder in Yukon, builds very quality homes. I don't know if you've seen the home he's putting up on Cedar or had a chance to walk around in it, but it's something...
I did see it.
It's something nice that anybody would be proud of to call their neighbor. And so, we don't ever plan to turn them into Section Eight. We plan to hold on to these for our lifetimes and have, again, a quality, affordable rental option, you know, right here in the heart of Yukon.
But I'm finding it hard to believe you're gonna build these nice duplexes. But then you're gonna put commercial right next door to it, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So explain to me why I would want to rent your property when I've got a business right next to me? I'm trying to buy the building across the street to get businesses out of there.
Well, we think there's a big demand, and again, we bought a, we bought a property that is already zoned commercial. It's already set C-three.
Okay.
And it's zoned R-two next door for duplexes. And so, we think that there's demand for both in Yukon. We think that they're both gonna be quality properties that complement each other. We don't anticipate that there's gonna be welding and grinding and cutting going on inside these facilities. We're not bringing in big power to them. Again, these are just intended to be pretty quiet neighbors that, you know, where the neighborhood electrician can park, park his service van and have some racking for materials and...
What's, what's the height of the building? What's, what's the height of the buildings?
The, the eve height is gonna be, is, is only gonna be ten to twelve feet high.
In your pitch?
Uh, we haven't finalized that yet, but there are gonna be very tall, there are gonna be any taller than the houses.
Okay. My only objective is, um, I'm worried about more rental properties here. Um, I really am. And I think with what y'all bought, and I know y'all have, I mean, if you gotta put in a retaining wall on that backside, it's gonna be very expensive. So I kind of see where y'all are coming from, but what I don't want to see the city do is bring in more rental property. Bring in single families, you know? I know you're gonna pay property taxes as well, but I want single families. Um, and we're kind of getting out of that. Uh, but I, you know, y'all, y'all have got to make a living like everybody else. Um, so my only objective here, I don't want to see commercial buildings right next to residential. It's just kind of, but I understand where you're coming from, trying to make a profit. I just think that, how many units you gonna try to put up?
Five. It's, it's one continuous building, and I want to improve Yukon too. Um, my family has a rich history. There are four to five buildings in downtown Yukon that were vacant before my family renovated them back in the late two thousands and turned them into retail spots that are being used by businesses right now. I was born and raised in Yukon, graduated from Yukon High School, so I don't want this to be, this, this is not some outside carpetbaggers trying to, you know, make a buck off the back of Yukon. I mean, this is Yukon people wanting to create a quality product to be used by the electricians of Yukon, by the folks of Yukon that need a clean, affordable place to rent a house. Um, and like I said, I think our track record of what, what we've built so far in other places stands for itself. These are quality. I walked through Zach's house on Cedar the other day. I'm not a part of that project. I called Zach and said, Zach, is this what you're planning on building for our duplexes? And he said, yes. I was like, wow, this is really nice. I mean, if you guys haven't had a chance to drive by Cedar, um, just kind of right there, um, off of, I don't know, fifth or sixth-ish, um, Zach's put up a really nice house there. That's what we plan to do here. I understand the opposition to duplexes, but just the reality is, is that people live in duplexes. Um, there's a lot of undesirable housing in that area that was built in a different time and place. I mean, you've got four units crammed on a lot smaller than we're putting one, one building on. And so if you look at the size of the yard, we're gonna have the quality of the structure. Although it is, yes, technically a duplex, I think you're gonna see that it's a far superior product and a far superior construction than any of the other multifamily living that's in here.
For the city planner, that, it appears in our drawing, it, I'm, I'm sure this isn't to scale, but it, it, it appears that the, um, the west side of the commercial buildings to the back of the duplexes is ninety-five feet. Is that correct? We, like I said, we don't, we don't have a real good scale drawing, but is that?
Seventy.
Is that about right? Each lot would be, five, six, and seven would be seventy-five, plus the piece of four and the piece of eight.
Are you talking about the distance from the back of the duplex?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's an important thing here, the, the back of the duplex to, uh.
It's gonna be about ninety feet.
About ninety feet.
Because you've got lots five, six, and seven, that's seventy-five feet.
Right.
Another five feet gets you to eighty, and ten feet on the other end gets you to ninety. So yeah, there's a ninety-foot space between the commercial.
And the, the dashed line between five and six, does that denote any kind of cedar fence or?
That's just denoting where the lot is split. Uh, we haven't decided yet exactly how we're fencing the properties. There will be some time, uh, but we haven't determined that yet.
Small, so, very small space, um.
Just, uh, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, just to clarify, so what we're actually talking about right here, right now, is just the rezone of Lot Six, right? From, from residential to, uh, C three.
Commercial.
Correct? Or, yeah, commercial. Um, so because, and that, rezoning that then, since that's going to be a drive, would actually provide, because otherwise that would be residential and some house could be put in at that point, which would further crowd this area. Is that?
Yes, and if, under the existing zoning for the property we bought, we're gonna build the commercials, we're gonna be able to build a commercial building.
Yes, right.
But if we can gain one more lot from commercial to residential, it's going to make the entire development that much better where everybody.
Spread it out a little.
We're not gonna have to crowd it in.
Okay.
But, I mean, steel's gonna go up on a commercial building whether this particular lot gets rezoned.
Okay.
So is there, is there any part of six through ten that's not commercial now?
Six.
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 Just, just six?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and with the, when, you know, there's not a list that says this lot is this zoning. They, the GIS guys dropped in a layer of zoning and it looked like the block of residential was a little bit bigger than the block of commercial. So I mean, even the s- scientific process that we used to arrive at the zoning was not perfect either. It just looked like the residential block was bigger than the commercial block. So therefore it was determined that the two properties were not equal, or the two zonings were not equal size, and therefore that, that dictated the, us, uh, putting this on the, on the, on.
Just, just to clarify to, um, industrial uses, like you were hinting at, would not be allowed in C three, so just.
I always like to get that on that camera.
Right.
Comes in handy later. All right, so we're discussing, uh.
Basically, it's Lot Six.
The rezoning of Lot Six.
Yeah, twenty-five foot wide.
Right.
Lot is what we're talking about.
But it has, it touches everything on both sides. Uh, anything else from anybody else in the, uh? Did you want to speak, ma'am? Okay. Just want to give everybody a chance to speak. All right, anything else?
Absolutely.
Informative that these people might want to know? Anything else come to your mind?
Uh, give it a chance. It's, it's gotta be, uh, a quality development and anybody, you know, any Yukonian could be proud of. Um, again, we're not out of cameras looking to make a quick buck off Yukon. This is our, this is our hometown. This is where we live and we would like to, you know, contribute to it and.
So where do you live? Do you live close by?
Yeah, so going in your neighborhood?
Uh, I live, I will. I've actually moved today, but I, I live in Detroit.
So this is a metal building going up in our neighborhood, cause I'm guessing it's a metal building, correct? So the desirability of.
Oh, yeah, you'll need to be at the mic.
I'm sorry.
So the folks out there could hear you.
So the desirability of me trying to build newer houses on Cedar is gonna come down. Cause no one wants to live next to a metal building. Um, it's another reason why I'm trying to buy the property across the street to get rid of it. Um, that's my only thing. Um, I wouldn't want a, a ten-on-twenty pitch, uh, you know? I- if you have a house on Cedar, no one wants to look at metal buildings, um.
And so, and just to reiterate, this is just, this, what we're voting on here is just Lot Six. Yeah, just basically to go to C three.
I get that, but if we can minimize that and not have so many, um, but I do understand where you're coming from, um.
Yeah.
I guess if you keep them, if you don't crowd it in and make it look like an industrial area, I think it's more desirable for people to come in and buy houses. But when you're building commercial, 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 it's kind of least desirable, at least in my aspect. Um, and that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
If, if it's next door to a commercial building, we actually tried to buy that entire block and build a street down the middle. Sorry. We actually tried to buy the dilapidated metal building to the east of there and develop a whole street, and, uh, we called the buyer and it was.
He's not selling.
It, not, not in a million years. Not for anything that anybody here would be willing to pay. Um, so we weren't able to do that, but, um, you know, I, I understand, like I said, I, I, it's not, this is not a gangly oilfield industrial building. This is a low pitch, low height, you know, roll-up garage door for an electrician kind of place. Um, and again, I think the area is benefiting from any kind of development. I mean, we're talking about putting on the line, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in capital to build these duplexes and build this commercial building. And so, um, you know, we wouldn't want to do anything to reduce the value of what we're trying to construct. And again, I think once we get these up, you'll see that this, uh, development will be accretive to the whole neighborhood, and it'll be something that we can all be proud of. That's my opinion.
All right, thank you. Any more input from the commissioners? Could have a draft motion, please?
In the case of the rezone application by Rack Property Group LLC, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings cited in the staff report. I move that this item be recommended for approval.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call?
Chairman Baker?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Ann Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerba?
Yes.
Commissioner Geis?
Yes.
All right, thank you all for coming. Any thing from staff tonight? New, new business?
Mister Chairman, we have no new business tonight. But open discussion, I do have something.
An open discussion, all right.
Yes. Our city planner, Kelly, here will be bringing forward to you in the next, we have a date we're working on bringing it to you. The, uh, document we've been working on for the zoning code update as well as the subdivision regs. So we'll be getting a copy once we're ready to submit for your review. And we'd love for you to go through it with a fine-tooth comb and make sure you're okay with all of the changes or proposed changes. So there's been a lot of time spent on it, so.
We're gonna get that paper and electronic?
We will make sure you get it both ways.
It's good to get it both.
Get a little bit of time to marinate on it?
Little bit. That's why we've been giving you pieces, the pieces that you've got. We have done some, uh, corrections or changes, but we're gonna give you the whole piece together, so you'll have it all together instead of pieces like we've given it to you in the past.
And how many, how many study sessions do you think we'll be on this?
Well, how long you got tonight? I think we just need to look at it. Hopefully, we can do it in one setting, uh, because what happens is when we do it every month or every two weeks, we seem to lose those pieces that we talk about. So we'll try to do it in one evening if, if we can, or if not, two evenings in a row, so we don't lose that connectivity and
I agree.
that thought pattern, because like I said, you know, we lose it when we,
Yeah.
we go and do other things.
I agree.
So.
Open discussion, you have something there too?
I have nothing more than what we just talked about.
I have something. I'd like to introduce Julie, and after tonight, she'll be taking over the meetings for me.
Well, welcome Julie.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome Julie.
Kathy, your presence will be missed.
Well, I'm probably gonna be filling in here and there. I mean, I'll be working until the end of the year, so.
You'll be kibitzing, all right.
We're hoping she forgets, but.
Still show up.
I've been beating her up, like, are you sure you didn't change your mind?
Bu- buy her wine and baked goods.
Mister Reinhardt, anything for us tonight?
Nothing that I know of.
Words of wisdom, all right.
I have something. Uh, congratulations to the twenty, twenty-two graduates. They are the true COVID kids that, uh, went through some of the hardest times we've been through and, uh, kudos to them for walking across the stage. Couple of us got daughters, so.
Glad to hear it. It was a fine night, I heard.
That's great.
Well, our next meeting will be July eighteenth, uh, but before then, there will be the, uh, our celebration on the third or the fourth. And so, uh, uh, everybody come out and, uh, celebrate the nation's birth. This meeting's adjourned.